Good evening, everyone. Glad everyone could make it out here tonight. We're going to reconvene in public session. This meeting of the Connect Club Board of Education will now reconvene. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Please stand for the pledge. After the pledge, please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our service men and women.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, please call the roll. Okay.
Okay, so I will just call her. Mrs. Manzy, present.
Mr. Nuttich, present.
Ms. Mittelman, present.
Ms. Donnelly, present.
Ms. Vodless, present.
Mr. Perioli, here.
Mr. Alorando, here.
Dr. Adams, Mr. Gravel, and Mrs. Kennedy, present.
Thank you.
Okay, changes to the meeting agenda. We do, I need a motion and a second. We have an addition for J3, addendum Schedule 1. Motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, moving on to E, the minutes of the Board of Education. The minutes of the January 10th, 2017 Business Audit Committee Meeting and Budget Guideline Development. Got a motion from?
Ms. Kennedy.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I assume no student government report tonight? Okay. So, moving on to G, Policy. Motion and a second to move to the second readings. Motion. Any discussion?
Sorry, what about sentence change?
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, moving on to H, New Business Discussion Items.
Three thought policy.
Okay.
A policy?
Yes, a policy. Improve it?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Motion.
Motion. Second? Second?
Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, there's a lot of policies wanting to be generally answered by. Somebody?
I don't have much of a fund, but as far as the general rule, like we're looking at the policies that were made or due that hadn't been touched in years and were not required by ISBA. And we're trying to trip back down to things that are overlapping or things that are not required under law because they're restricted. So that's what most of us are like. My tablet's not working, so I don't know each one specifically, but that's a general piece of what most of them were about. That's what we've started doing in policy. We've started going through the book from the beginning because we were able to make it through the book, the entire book, and review everything and renew all the ones that we've reviewed. So now we're looking at the ones that are obsolete and the ones that are not required under ISBA under law.
Okay, but crimes aren't crimes under law, they're just under ISBA, same thing?
Well, I said both, under either law.
Yeah, none of them are mandatory. The majority of the ones that we're looking at are things that are taken care of annually in admission statement and goals. So we felt a lot of the things that were on those policies were old and we've looked at.
H R B A is moved into?
That's moved into, well, that's in statute, that policy. So what we've been doing is looking at the policies not in statute, which we don't need in a overarching policy because obviously we're going to do the state statute. So that one's in statute and evaluation of instructional professional staff is also in statute, that's A K P R. And so in order to us not have to go back every time the statute changed, we will just use the statute instead of the policy.
Okay, aye.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, moving on to A, New Business Discussion Items. Both? I get a motion? Both? Discuss.
Mr. Mittelman, why don't you do some introductions?
Thank you. As it is mid-year to our school year, we'd like to give you some updates on where we are with regards to some of our curriculum initiatives. The goal is, is through the next couple of meetings, to provide you some updates where we are with literacy, mathematics, statistics, and other programs. This evening, we have with us our Director of English Language Arts, Kristina Poppy. She's going to present to you a mid-year report of where we are with our literacy initiative for our K5 elementary students. After that, Mr. Costa will update the board on a project that he's been working on with Central Office, the Director, and the Initiative Team tonight. So, right now, Ms. Poppy.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As Mr. Mittelman mentioned, I'm here to talk about a tremendous undertaking that our teachers and students in grades K3 and 5 have been involved in this academic year. And that's our literacy initiative. In particular, we're working through an introduction to the units of study and writing. And I believe that I've spoken to this, or touched upon this in front of the board in the past, but just to refresh your memory, you've seen this slide before, actually. And this is essentially how we got to where we are today. So if you recall, last year, we had a representative team of our primary and intermediate level teachers meeting regularly throughout the school year. And we named them the Literacy Team, essentially. And they were charged with the task of talking about student writing and our approach to instruction of writing in our K3, 5, and our first, second, and fourth grade classrooms as well. The result of those discussions yielded a consensus that we were looking for something more consistent in terms of instructional delivery, in terms of an instructional resource to use in order to forward our students' writing. And so the result of that was an inspection of different approaches, different resources, and strategies that are available, used by other districts. And the team made the recommendation to the district formally to move forward with Lucy Paulin's units of study and writing. Upon kind of inspecting our options as a district, we decided as a district to move forward with the implementation of units of study and writing in grades K3 and 5 this year. And to continue the implementation and support of K3 and 5, but to continue the implementation with introducing the units of study and writing to grades 1, 2, and 4 next year. So what the resource provided in the eyes of the team, and there are several team members in the audience this evening, was that the resource was concise and easy to follow. And I'll be speaking to that a little bit this evening. There was a fluency to the units and lessons that were contained within the resource. The resource addressed the different genres of writing, different text types within each genre as well. So we're touching upon narrative, opinion, and informational writing through these units of study. In addition, they offered relatable examples for both teachers and students to look at as anchor texts and to allow for the real development of ownership of the resource amongst teachers and students as well. It offers very grade-level rubrics, I'll speak to that a little bit this evening as well, and offers opportunities and ideas for differentiation. And that's part of our work that's taking place this fall. Implementation overview is essentially what I just spoke about, but if you take a look down to the fourth bullet point, an important aspect is the unpacking and planning piece of the implementation of the resource at the building level. So we're really working at this point on giving teachers the ability to explore and implement a single unit of study in grades K3 and 5. And we're moving ahead with a narrative unit of study in grades K3 and 5 during this first part of the spring semester. In addition, our literacy team from last year that kind of steered us into this pathway is continuing to meet. We've had one meeting so far. We're talking about sort of feedback at the building level because certainly, you know, I'm not in every building on a daily basis. And certainly, to hear from their colleagues and to kind of share with the larger group how things are going, what the feel is in their buildings is an essential part of this process. So we recognize the importance of the continuation of the team's work, and we are working to kind of extend that into this school year. So just to pull you back into September and talk to you about our month-by-month plan, what has happened so far. In September, we pulled our K3 and 5 teachers at every grade level into Central Office. And we had cross-district conversations with one of two literacy consultants, excuse me. And those literacy consultants facilitated discussions around student writing as it exists and took a look at the source materials, because we had bought the resource over the summer, for all of our teachers to be able to kind of begin to page through and get a feel for it in September. And so that was the purpose of our conversation meeting in September. It was great work. It was wonderful to be able to bring everybody together across the district into a single room on a single grade level and talk about our students and talk about our instructional experiences in the classroom. In October, our consultants, again, we were working with two consultants. One is Michelle Whitman, the second is Sarah Cordova. I believe that you've heard me say both of their names in the past. They headed into the buildings, and they each carry a designated building for the remainder of the school year. So Michelle is working into four of our elementary schools consistently across the span of the school year. Sarah is working into three of our elementary schools. In building, they worked with the teachers on grade level to understand the sequence of this work from K through 5. So it's not only what's happening in their classroom on their grade level, but where it sort of came from and where it's moving to. And the resource allows for that, which is wonderful. It's a very rich kind of example of that continued understanding of where we fall into the writing progression at every grade level. So that was part of the work in October. In addition, this is a workshop-based program, or rather, a workshop-based resource. And so teachers were talking about how to manage their classrooms in order to prepare to implement that workshop model in their rooms. So we talked about students' writing stamina. We talked about, you know, how to literally arrange things in the classroom in order to facilitate the resource, in order to facilitate the lesson. In November, our consultants pushed back into our elementary buildings, and their work was to head into this particular textbook writing pathways within the unit of study and to look across the narrative unit of study. So they were looking at the learning progressions for the narrative unit. And again, that kind of puts us into the context of what students are learning, not only on the singular lesson level, but where they're coming from and essentially where they're going. So it's kind of a broad stroke across the units. That was our November work. And in December, we pulled back into Central Office. It's a testament to the teachers. December is a very hectic time of year at the elementary level, and every single one of them gave their all during these cross-district conversations. They were really present. They were prepared to discuss what they noticed in their students' writing. Because at this point, we talked about the grade level rubrics, and we examined the different criteria for performance for our students in each grade level. And so to have those conversations, the presence of mind really has to be there. Because you have to be precise and you have to be sort of attuned to what your students are doing and perhaps what the resource says that they should be doing at this point in time. And understanding that our students are kind of stepping into this scenario without not necessarily having, you know, the experience through this resource up to this point in their careers. So there was a bit of kind of norming here.
Just a question. You have these meetings, is it just a few teachers from each grade level or is it all the teachers from?
It's all of the teachers from the grade levels. So what we've done is we've invited, and we've kind of split them in half. So we've invited teachers on, like the kindergarten grade level, for example, to attend one of two sessions. And it's an inclusive conversation. So we have small class settings, we have regular class settings. You know, we've gone ahead and attempted to include everybody in the invitation to join the conversation. The last piece of our December session was a literal deconstruction of that narrative unit. And so essentially, teachers walked away from that session with a Cliff's Notes version, if you will, and a bridge version of the actual unit, a reference guide that was developed by their colleagues. So we spent time looking at the components of each lesson, deconstructing the lesson, and then literally putting it into a guide so that teachers could easily flip through and see, okay, this is what this lesson means, this is what this lesson means, and this is what the next lesson means.
So I guess, I don't want to go ahead and finish that. I guess the question is.
Can you put your microphone on?
What we'll do is, yeah, we'll go through the entire presentation and then I'll give you a chance, a chance to dialogue and question.
Into January, and we're just finishing up the in-building work that's happening in this month. Essentially, teachers were tasked with launching the narrative unit of study during this month. And so our consultants are heading back into the buildings this month in order to support the teachers in every building in different ways, according to their experiences, according to their experiences with the students who are sitting in front of them, according to the needs of those students and their professional needs. We've encouraged the consultants to encourage the teachers to articulate the challenges that they're experiencing and the successes that they're experiencing in their classrooms. That's an important piece of this work. And we've also built in a reflective process that I'll speak to in just a few moments for both the teachers and the consultants themselves. But perhaps I should stop here because this is sort of where we are now. Can you tell us about how each building has kind of decided what they're, how to use it sometimes? Because I think that's really important.
Can you please, the heating thing is on, I can't hear a thing that you're saying back there.
You can't hear me, anyway.
Oh, well.
So the next slide, I think, is really important because each building has differentiated themselves to use their consultants as they push into the classrooms differently. And that's what is so exciting, to be able to have a consultant that can do that. So I think that's really important for us to hear. The consultants are dedicated to hearing the teachers and also hearing their principals in terms of, you know, different sort of stylistic variations on their support for their in-building work. And so I listed here a few variations on this concept of in-building work. So for instance, we've had consultants pushing into classrooms, that actually happened today in Isleaur, wherein the consultant goes ahead and observes the lesson that's being implemented by a teacher, a mini-lesson, and the ensuing student work, and then has an opportunity to debrief with the teacher or teachers, either one-to-one or in small groups. Another model is where this consultant actually goes in, pushes into a classroom, and models a mini-lesson or models a part of a lesson while the teacher or teachers observe, according to the building, and then continues that debriefing process after. We've also had situations where consultants have pushed into buildings and have met with teachers on grade levels, in conference areas, in classrooms, in order to collaborate around specific lessons, specific questions, subjects of discussion. And so part of that work has to be done preceding certainly the consultant's visit to the building. And quite often, it happens weeks in advance with our consultants reaching out to our building principals and taking into account the communication that they've had from teachers within the building in terms of what their needs are and what they're ready to do for the next month. The consultants have also been purposeful in needing teachers with kind of a charge for the following month, so that, you know, it's an ongoing sort of cycle, and it's not just stopped from one visit to the next. So there's purpose and motivation behind their particular business. In reference to that reflective process, we've also asked for physical documentation from the teachers themselves in terms of what their takeaways are, what they're still questioning or wondering about, and what they foresee as what they need to do before the next session. So they very, very sort of willingly and candidly have articulated that for us at the end of every session, anonymous or not anonymous. And that piece has worked for us because it's another mode of communication to the consultants in terms of what we really need and what we are anticipating or what we're truly thinking about that I didn't have a chance to say to you. On the flip side of this reflective form, there's also a grading sheet, actually, for the consultant themselves, how well did the consultants attend to the different tasks at hand. And we invite students to leave commentary about the particular consultant's work.
Are the, still wondering pieces being used then in the follow-up sessions? Because I know that one of the things that we were able to do this year along that same lines is meet together as a group, which I think is really important, so you can come together and then strive for more of a cohesiveness on that grade level to understand what you're implementing, what the expectations are, you know. So if that's what's happening from this, that's fabulous.
That's, we share with the consultants. The consultants have a glance at these after every session, and we've worked to kind of communicate with them about those pieces, you know, in addition to their glance after each session. Remember when? Remember, how did this go? How did that piece follow up? So it's been, the written word, ironically, in this case, has been really very crucial, a crucial component to their consulting.
So what we'll do is, maybe this week or the next week, is I'll share with you, what we do is we take the notes from the, like, the office and review it, and then we type into our documents. I'll share with the board of education, so I think we see the feedback, the staff, the takeaways. The goal for us is to continuously develop those feedback groups because implementation is not a one-time process. It's a process, and it's an ongoing thing. I can't speak more highly enough for Christina, the work that she's done, as well as Arlene Abraham, Karen Moser, who, you know, have been facilitating the literacy issue. But I can speak higher of the staff. They have been truly amazing with what they have undertaken this year, their willingness, their eagerness. You said a word of attentiveness. They're fully engaged, and I think that's the amazing piece. And one of the things that I am most proud of is that their voice is being honored throughout the entire process. And that's something that we try to have with each of the initiatives.
Can I ask a question? How long do you think this process is going to be for, among other support, you know, that they're working on?
Tomorrow.
Huh?
That slide right there, you said very beautifully.
You did say that. And are you seeing any results at this point? Do students, anything change?
So before Kristina gets to the last slide, which kind of talks about, you know, all of the initiatives that we're putting forward have multi-year plans that are fluid, that are relooked at. They have a team of teachers that are constantly providing feedback on the guidance and direction that we're going in. But one of the things that we're most excited about is that this is a direct connection to the work that we've been doing in the middle school for the past three years. We're finally at the point where we're, this is the first year for our eighth-grade teachers using the workshop model and using the units of study. Our sixth and seventh-grade teachers have been using it for a number of years now. And the connection between what's happening at the elementary school to what's happening in the middle school is going to be absolutely an amazing experience for our kids and for our teachers. We could definitely share some of the work that our classroom teachers on the elementary level are seeing, but we can definitely share the work in sixth and seventh grade, both pre and post.
I want to thank you, because you just answered one of my questions. As I understand, last year, this was piloted in Sycamore.
This work began in Sycamore.
Right. And if I'm understanding correctly, this is a modified version of Teachers College. This is a modified version of Teachers College.
These are not, our consultants are not Teachers College trainers.
So they notice that the name is on this PowerPoint.
Because they are her resources.
So wouldn't it be a modification of Teachers College, or something that she had started? So wouldn't this be her modified version of Teachers College?
Very similar.
It's very similar. I guess that's an interesting way of kind of packaging it, because with Lucy Paulin's kind of branding of the units of study comes her own professional development team. And so as a district, we opted to go with, instead of our consultants who we're working with currently, neither of them are Teachers College products. They're both actually products of NYU. And they say that at the outset, but this is their life's work. This workshop model, these resources are their life's work. So they don't carry that TC branding, per se, that he.
I was trying to be attached to this.
Because the resources are our Lucy Paulins. Those are her publications.
Oh, okay.
Right. So, and so we bought the publications, but for our implementation, we're not using her TC staff to do that, Teachers College staff to do that.
That would be the difference between the two programs.
There wouldn't necessarily be. And one piece for us was about a two-year waiting period to have a contact with the consultants. And that was one of the factors that the team considered in their investigation.
And this, the other piece that Kristina used the word differentiation, it allows us to differentiate for our staff a little bit better by us managing it. We have staff who have been trained in literacy collaborative in the past. We have new staff members that have come in that were Teacher College-trained. So we have a lot of staff that has a lot of the same experiences but in different places. So this allows us to be able to differentiate for them to where they are.
So you can't necessarily say one program is better than the other.
They're, in my opinion, which is an uneducated opinion, but it's, you know, to me, they mirror each other. She drafted that, and she also worked in this. So I think this is, in her opinion, a more updated, aligned vision.
I had the opportunity to see Mr. Pollack last year. He's, as you know, is such an enthusiast over this program.
So passionate, sure.
And having the opportunity to see the teachers and just collabally work together and was so enthusiastic, I mean, it was like, it was amazing to watch. So my other question actually is, so are those Sycamore children, when they do go into the middle school, do they have somewhat of an advantage because they've had a year or two behind them going into the middle school as opposed to those kids who are not just learning it now?
That's a good question. I think that the differentiation that's occurring, that Ms. Whitman is doing within Sycamore, because she's working within that building, certainly comes from her experiences with those teachers over the last year. And certainly, it was more of an invitation within Sycamore in order to do this work. And so I would say that her work this year is kind of leveling the experience for the students within the building. Will some students have more experience in filling out this workshop model and in filling out some of the vocabulary that comes along with it? Yes. But will that give them an advantage necessarily in their sixth-grade classroom? No. The work that was done by the sixth-grade teachers that started, now this is their third year, so that started two years ago, was facilitated by Sarah Cordova or other literacy consultants. So Sarah's work, again, although it is based upon this TC kind of mentality, she worked to develop with the teachers themselves, independent units. So those units that are happening at the middle school are not the result of a resource that we purchased. We essentially purchased Sarah's voice in order to kind of write this writing curriculum around our students in sixth grade. So that is really the sixth-grade teacher saying, this is what our students are able to do now, and this is what we see that they need. And through Sarah's kind of assistance, that work happened. Last year, it was revisited, and this year, it's being revisited. So her support has not dropped out. Her conversation with the sixth-grade teachers has not ended, which is wonderful because her work with the fifth-grade students is now going to translate into those sixth-grade conversations that she's having with teachers. Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So this year, all K3, 5 students are doing both the reading and writing or just the writing units?
Just the writing units.
Or they do all the writing units?
They are doing just the narrative unit.
That's it.
Because of the math work that's happening as well, and because of, you know, our social studies inquiries, and because of all of the newness, we made a conscious decision to. we made a conscious decision to build this PD in a way that was a little less aggressive.
So, uh, if they're doing it, uh, just one unit in the K three and five, what writing curriculum or, or program are they doing in one, two, and four?
One, two, and four, their, teachers are continuing the work that they have done. They are continuing their, you know, the typical writing that has taken place in their classrooms. And that could be, you know, the results of a variety of their experiences over the course of their careers.
It's not a particular program.
It's not a particular.
Well, the one thing that we did do is we did purchase some resources for them. So every teacher K through five has the resources. So that it gives them the opportunity, depending again on, on their experience level, to start to, to implement and start to test the waters in their classrooms. A lot of our staff do use the workshop model for both writing, reading, and writing.
And that's their old individual facility.
Through your research, do you know how many or approximately how many districts are going toward this unit of writing, these units of writing?
We have information, we have local information and I can get that for you. Um, my colleague, Arlene Abraham, actually has that material.
Does this seem like a lot?
It does, um, it, it certainly does. She has specific districts and when they are and, or have implemented. So it's, we found that, in a very general sense, we found that if it's not sort of a balanced literacy approach, it's something built off of the workshop model. And of course, this is not true of every school district. And again, she has this specific, she has a.
All right, so, uh, they're doing the writing this year, are they going to eventually do the reading?
From year one to.
Yes.
You said, oh, it's yours guys.
We, we've had, so, uh, we're very intentional with our roll-up uh, because we want a really deep understanding of the process. So that as we move through this over the next couple of years, um, the rate of usage within the classrooms will increase at a, at a steady pace. And when we, we've already had teachers, I would say, begging for the reading units. Um, and we are, we are piloting them in some areas to see how they, how they like them and how they fit. Um, but it is something that we're definitely.
How much money have we contributed towards this?
I would have to get my information.
Is it as much as the six hundred thousand we spent on that?
No, because the resource packs are, uh, are not as, as close. So they're about, uh, I would say a few two or three hundred dollars per, per each.
So they're spending a lot on our math program, but not so much on our, I like.
No, we, we are, I mean, the support, um, so the professional development that we're bringing in, uh, the cost of the substitutes, uh, the cost of the resources. So we're looking at the classroom libraries now, we're looking at building libraries, not the actual library libraries, but their book rooms. Um, so we're, you know, we're investing significantly in that.
Okay, great, thank you.
You mentioned Ms. Poppy, uh, Clifton version, the Enbridge version. Teachers came up with that?
Yes, so part of the.
That's good, very important.
During, and based upon the session, I'm sure the teachers here will be able to tell you, based upon their session and the amount of time that they spent in the morning comparing student work to the rubrics, some of them had more time in the afternoon to do this work than other groups, but they all eventually got the product. And what they did was essentially, they were assigned a particular lesson from the unit in order to kind of buzz through and they restructured on paper what the salient features were. So these are the materials that you need, this is essentially where you're going to go with your mini lesson and these are certain questions, et cetera. So the, and, and so they came away with a packet of the same page that was filled out for each lesson by their colleagues. So the, the one, and I don't even want to say drawback, but one feature of Hawkins' work is that it is incredibly worrying, it's robust. And so in order to sort of stay ahead of that curve, uh, sometimes it can certainly be challenging. And so this was born of the consultants thought that let's get something in everybody's hands so that they feel as if they have a, a starting point of attempt for, for this work.
So even though we're, you know, I want to go back to one question.
Dean, can you please put on your microphone, I'm sorry.
We're short microphones, but one of the, the questions that you had regarding the types of writing, we're still going through each of the different styles of writing on each of the grade levels. So, um, we're not, not doing that, um, we are covering each of those genres, uh, but we're using the narrative unit, um, out of the unit system.
So I understand in kindergarten, the kids are, I would say, given ten dollar words and all they're supposed to do is just recognize or be familiar with hearing those words. I understand that has a great impact because now you have kindergartners that actually recognize ten dollar words. You know, in the first grade, you can tell you the meaning of it, you know, which I think is a big difference compared to a few years ago, as far as moving in education. So I, I, I think that was great.
Part of what was real eye-opening to me about the consultants work, particularly with the kindergarten teachers, was their, their focus on, it's okay where your students are right now. And so essentially their first look at the rubric was comparing student work that may just be pictures, they may just be images and a few letters. And, and that's okay and it has its place according to the learning progression, right? So for me, and I can say some of my colleagues, that was certainly an eye-opening experience. And I will say that the teachers, some of them said, I think my expectations of students are almost too high. You know, I, I looked at this initial work and thought, well, maybe this isn't necessarily going to be good enough compared to the rubric in this product. But what, what that session, that December session, the morning portion yielded was a real understanding of, it's not about necessarily that they are the most competent, that they are labeling every picture, that, that they have their writing sentences or their writing words or, you know, their spelling is accurate or close, et cetera. It was really about celebrating where they are at this moment and taking notes so that when we take a look forward in, oh, into April and we have the results and we come back into central office with our last cross-teacher conversation, we're able to compare that final piece to the initial and say, okay, I'm able to see what I taught into here. I'm able to see student growth in all of these areas. So it was very, again, I will say it again, it was very eye-opening. And I think maybe getting sort of comfortable with feeling uncomfortable for some of those kindergarten teachers with, with sort of where their students are starting. And it's already conversations with everybody about being at this stage right now. Moving forward, and this is my last slide, uh, for next year. We're working with consultants right now to talk about how to move forward in the most effective and efficient way for our K three and five teachers to continue the support that, and the work that started this year. For grades one, two, and four, we're going to continue with this cycle that we implemented this year into next year. I have here that we're looking to implement a unit in December. That may change based upon our conversations with the consultants as we develop their schedules for next year and their work for next year. But certainly the support is not a single year and done. And so we recognize the importance of the ongoing and the continuation aspects of this work. For 2018 and 2019, we're looking at a reflection year for K three and five, not an ending of the support, but a more of a reflective process. Where are we and, and how can we continue to make improvements? And for one, two, and four, again, it's a continuation of the cycle that was K three and five in seventeen and eighteen, for eighteen and nineteen. I know those are broad strokes, but part of this work is, as Dean said, you continually kind of have to adapt, be reflective, and take steps forward based upon what happens, you know, the month before, two months before, what the feedback is and what particular needs are of our students and our teachers.
And that same level of, that same level of, uh, professional development that, you know, the one, uh, the K three, five teachers experienced, this shift coming together and reflecting, all that will be implemented as well next year with the first, second, fourth?
Yes, and continued for the K three and five.
So this year, the K three and five, they're doing one unit of study in the writing.
Correct.
So next year, they'll do all the units?
That is the projection, that they'll head into four different units during seventeen, eighteen.
And then one, two, and four will do one unit next year.
We foresee the possibility that teachers may move forward with more facility for one, two, and four because of the work that's happening this year, the conversations that are happening. But to kind of hang our hat on, you have to implement X number of units. We'd like to kind of keep the experience similar. But certainly will, will reflect as we go through the process next year with those teachers.
So can I, I'd like to thank Christina, Poppy, Arlene Abraham, Karen Moser, and our staff. All right, we're, we're trying to, uh, you know, keep the, the time limit to a reasonable time limit. So, uh, I want to introduce, uh, our high school principal, Mr. Ken Costa. Ken has been doing a tremendous amount of work on a project that we call the Futuring Project for Pennebun High School. Um, it's a, a long-term project that allows us to do a variety of different things. Evaluate what we have, project what we need, um, and kind of build towards, uh, what we think uh, the future is going to look like for our students. It also allows us to project out costs, it allows us to identify, uh, areas of strengths and areas that we need to improve on. And, uh, I just wanted if you gradually can, on the work that he's done, um, you know, being consultation with, with us at central office, uh, with the directors, chairs, as well as his APs at the high school, so, Mr. Costa. Again, this is a lengthy presentation, so we could, you know, if you could pencil in your questions and when we get to the end, we can go over them.
I just thought, so no teachers were involved in this vision?
I'll let him speak to that.
Hi, Chris Millman. Good evening.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Costa. Uh, Dr. Adams, trust me. The cabinet, the Pennebun High School Futuring Project. It is a collaborative efforts, not only directors, assistant principals, central office, and other guidance, uh, Deb Murphy, I really appreciate from them. We've come with some significant, how do you word, changes? What processes and projects that we feel is going to lead the high school in a different direction? Through our conversation with Deb, the directors, our assistant principals, we come up with a simple mantra we get effective. We build futures, that's what we're here for in the next year. We're here to prepare our students in twenty-first century learners. Twenty-first century skills generally refer to, you know, certain core competencies. Some of those core competencies that we want to instill in our students and make sure that they receive are communication skills, collaboration, teamwork, critical thinking skills, creativity, problem solving, cultural awareness. I don't have to read through the entire list, but I would love to say one thing. If listening to Ms. Poppy's presentation as a high school principal, um, honestly, truly exciting of all the work that's been done by Christina and the teachers and the staff to get the literacy and the mathematics and all the other components in a different direction. So when they come to us at the high school, they're going to come with these skills. So this, this whole process that we came together with, with directors is fully aligned with what they're doing at the elementary and the middle school levels, which after hearing the presentation, I'm even more excited about, to be honest with you. The Futuring Open View and the Futuring Project, we're looking at certain core and key areas. Looking at current course evaluation, the academy structure, social, emotional learning, community service, professional development. Now, when we came up with these key areas, we aligned these areas with the five pillars of success within the district. Current course evaluation is aligned with the academic literacy, one of the pillars. The academy structure itself, which we're going to in more detail in a little, in a moment, is aligned with the career, technical, and financial literacy. The social, emotional learning and community service has to do with the interpersonal literacy. And the professional development, which we're going to in our final slide, is also aligned with all five of the pillars of success. With Deb Murphy, excuse me, with Deb Murphy, the directors, Mr. Millman, assistant principals, we collaborated him up with our own educational metrics plan for the high school. The educational metrics plan will identify, measure, and validate the following areas of the instructional process for the high school. As in most high schools, we all love to see an increase in mastery rates, graduation rates, the number of students writing AP exams or taking the AP exams, enrollment in the academy programs, passing rates, growth versus fixed mindset, especially in the ever-changing world. You know, we looked at the growth versus fixed mindset. I saw an interesting video on YouTube and, um, which was regarding the people versus the educational system. There was an interesting video because the man in the video talked about what education looked like seventy years ago, a hundred years ago. And he had an easel, and on his easel, he had a telephone, one of the first telephones. He says, this is what the telephone looks like, flips the chart. This is what the modern telephone looks like. Has a picture of, uh, the next picture was a picture of Model T car. This is what automobiles used to look like, flips it over, modern day car. Picture of a classroom, early nineteen twenties, students in a row raising their hands. This is what early education looks like. Flipped over to the next picture, it was a modern day picture of a classroom. Fixed versus growth mindset. We are looking to educate our students in a different way. We want to prepare ourselves, our students for that twenty-first, twenty-first century, that twenty-first century learners. The growth versus fixed mindset, we also look at interesting data. We have fuzzy data and hard data. Hard data is easy to come by, that's our state scores, our school report. The fuzzy data, the things that almost, I won't say the word intangibles, but the fuzzy data are through our conversations, through our observations, through our student surveys. This is how we assess how we're doing as a building with our students. What do we want our students to look like in the future? This past summer, this past August, we had our freshman orientation. We had standing room only in the auditorium, the first time since I've been there, which was fantastic. We had panel of people speak to the incoming freshmen and their parents. We had one particular student, I shouldn't say his name, I'm going through, but he liked Juan Lasso, who was invited to speak at the orientation, as almost as a student ambassador. Juan, growing up, faced many challenges in universities. When he got up and spoke to the students and the parents of the incoming freshman, I myself was absolutely floored on maturity, how articulate he was, how charismatic he was, how well he spoke to these people to engage them. As a young man, I was inspired and I would love to see all of our students graduate with none of that confidence, with the maturity and the ability to do the same thing. That's why I call it awesome fact, and that's one of my visions that I'd like to see all of our students graduate with. Now, I shift to learning and teaching. To steal Jim Collins' words, "Vote from good to great." I think all of us, in every aspect, we need to believe that our students can achieve more, that they can do more, they can do better on the test, they can do better in class, they can do better in the community, we all could do more. In order to properly evaluate our courses, we have identified some essential questions. All of the directors, yourself, the assistant principals, these are the key questions or essential questions that we need to ask with our course evaluation process. What courses do students want and need? How do we identify the skills needed for our students to be successful? Do our current courses run sequentially? And staff will learn to prepare our students for the next level, whether that be college, the workforce, the military? Are there gaps in our curriculum and if so, how will we fill them? Do our elective and AP courses meet the requirements of the twenty-first century learners going back to the five pillars of success? Are our twenty-first century skills incorporated into our current framework? All we currently teach students and giving them the skills and tools needed to be truly successful in the modern world? And do our courses allow students to achieve those five pillars of success?
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Oh, are you convinced of doing this right now? Are you doing this right now or this is something you're going to do next year or?
Well, we're in the process of, I'm going to get it done in a few more slides. The academy structure. Picture yourself in college. I'm in college as a liberal studies major. And as a liberal, liberal arts major, uh, you take specific courses, you graduate from that college or university, according to where you know the studies. Liberal studies is very similar to our Regent's Diploma in High School. You take general line of courses, you study, you have your majors and your certain electives and you work through and you graduate with a Regent's Diploma, advanced Regent's Diploma. Advanced Regent's Diploma. Without a concentration, now, let's go back to college, we're in college, you're a liberal arts major, but you want to do a concentration or a minor in sociology or social studies, or mathematics, or science. You have that opportunity in college. Currently, in our educational systems and what we have here, Connect One, we don't have that opportunity. We go through motions, and we all graduate with a Regent's or Advanced Regent's Diploma. The academy structure that we're, that we're creating will afford all students an opportunity to have a different concentration other than that liberal arts program. The creation, evaluation, enhancement of this academy structure is a three-step process. First process is exploration. The second is implementation, and the third will be reevaluation. Two forms of academies that we're looking at, non-CTE academies and CTE academies. Each of the academies, we're going to start with the non-CTE, but each of the academies start with initial survey conducted to assess the interest of a program being proposed. In that initial survey, that is a student-driven survey, where the students have an opportunity to comment on what it is that they would like, what it is that they want, what it is that they need as far as that academy. For the non-CTE academies, the creation of an academic academy committee consists of teachers, administrative community members, in which the industry leaders are a key stake in that academy. The structure that we're going to see before you has already been in place, and I have to compliment Brian Frank and Mary Losi for coming up with the actual academy structure and exploration process. The academy committee, their job is to review the survey, to look at the various academies that, to see, excuse me, Connect One High School, we're conducting, and conduct a yearly review of the academies and suggestions for any necessary changes. They review the current courses that we already offer in the high school. They make recommendations for any change in any course of the high school, as well as implementation of new courses. The academy committee also makes the final recommendation, whether or not we should or should not create that specific academy. For CTE academies, this is a accredited academy by the state. So in order to create a CTE academy, we have to follow specific state guidelines. But just like the non-CTE academies, it all starts with an initial review for a student survey. Is there a need, is there a want, is there a desire to have this specific academy introduced to the high school as a concentration? The difference between a CTE academy and a non-CTE academy is an internal and external review committee. The internal review committee, very similar to the other one, where it's teachers, administrators, industry leaders, community members. The external review committee, our teachers, administrators, industry leaders, and students. The external review, my opinion, holds much more credence than the initial onset of the first committee. The students have an opportunity to voice their opinions, to see what courses they think would work best in the academy, to see which courses they feel they may need or want to be part of that academy. And then they make the final recommendation to administration, whether that academy should or should not run. The implementation, step two of the academy process, the implementation process. Present the courses need to complete the academy. We're going to add new courses and the strands to complete the academy in the course selection guide. Students will all be a well-aware of the academy structure and what courses they need to participate in the academy. And a course selection process will be used to, as a measurement, for the number of students entering each academy strand. Now, this is a very lengthy process, and it really is an encumbering process, but there's a method to our advantage which we're going to get to in a little while. After each year, there will be a reevaluation of each academy moving forward. We're going to look at how many students are currently enrolled in the academy. What effect does the strand have on similar elective courses? What percentage of students are continuing the academy strand? What we have learned about the benefits and/or the limitations about that academy, and what can we anticipate moving forward? So for each academy, every year, you have a three-step process. You'll have the exploration, the implementation, and the reevaluation. Timeline. The academic directors have already begun looking at our current, excuse me, our current courses. Like the Business Academy and the STEM Academy, which will be incorporated next year, the directors have already looked at what's already in place. What current courses can we implement into the academy to create a seamless transition for some of the students who are involved or interested in taking the academy strand?
Can I ask you a question, sorry?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll talk about the Business Academy. Say you wanted to build upon it, is that in there, or is that the academy that's already there? Say you wanted to build upon it, is that discussed?
Absolutely. In the reevaluation process, every single year, whatever academy is introduced that year, during the reevaluation process, they look at all the courses, what are they missing, what could improve it? Should we add additional courses? Should we take courses out? Should we include a project, monitor a project? So during that reevaluation process that takes place each year, those questions will be asked. So yes, you could build upon it. This current school year, Brian Frank, Mary Losi, and the rest of the artists did the exploration for STEM and Business Academy. Those two academies are already in the course guide for selection for next year. 2017, 18, we will, that'll be the first implementation of those two academies into the high school. We also, next year, will be exploring computer and cybersecurity, and at the end of the school year, we'll do the reevaluation for STEM and Business. 2018, 2019, we'll do the implementation of a computer and cybersecurity academy and start exploring technical and performing arts. Now, just as a caveat, during the exploration process, because an academy is being explored or discussed, it doesn't mean it's going to work. So if you see this timeline, and we have five additional years past this current school year, at any given moment, if in 2017, 18, the evaluation or exploration, excuse me, the exploration process determines that computer and cybersecurity is not of interest to the students, is not going to recommend it, that specific academy will not be in the department for the school.
So wouldn't it be easier just to take a survey of the kids ahead of time and narrow down the four? Instead of exploring this, okay, that's not going to work, okay, explore this, it's not going to work. Have you tried maybe surveying the kids and seeing what they want and geared towards what they want?
That's what we did.
That's what we did.
Oh, because all kids were surveyed?
We did a survey last year for this college.
So all kids in the high school were surveyed?
I think they were surveyed through years.
So it stays in classes.
Okay, so that information was gathered to?
That's, that's.
That's, this information was gathered with other students.
And that's where the exploration phase begins?
The kids chose it.
It's the identi-, yeah, it's the identification of the need and want from the students, and then the process begins.
So moving forward to 2019, we'll start exploring communication and digital media, 21, foreign language and international studies, 21, 22, exploration of construction systems. So each year, there will be the exploration process, implementation, and reevaluation for every academy moving forward. And it is a very rigorous process, and a thing that is beneficial for our students to have that concentration. In addition to our academy structure, we like to incorporate a service credit. Young Leader Service Credit, which is a community-based service credit for participation in the community. Each student, we have to acquire a minimum of 10 hours of community service per year. What does this look like? The best of 2018, which is this upcoming school year, they would have to obtain 10 hours of community service in order to meet the graduation requirement from Connect One High School.
And here is a question?
Yes.
That's 2,000 kids?
I'm sorry.
2,000 students?
Yes.
And they each have to have 10 units of community service for graduation? For years? That's a lot of community service.
Well, I think, and I hate to cut you off, and I'm sure this is, if you look at the implementation piece and the focus, it may clarify some of those questions.
Yeah, I saw you have three credits for this and three credits for that.
We're going to get to that in a minute. So, class of 2019, which is our current year, they're looking at 20 units of credit of community service, 20, 20, 30. And our current freshman coming in this year, going to Connect One High School, they would have completed 40 hours of community service to meet their graduation requirement. Now, how do the students earn a service credit? Now, I set up two examples for ninth and 10th grade students, and then you go to 11th grade and 12th grade next. For a ninth and 10th grade student, they can earn one credit up to a maximum of three credits for belonging to an athletic team, club, musical theatrical association, or an officer of student government. So for example, I belong to all of those things. I'm a free sport athlete, I'm in the play, I'm in the student government, I do a lot at school. I'm going to earn three hours towards my community service credit. The remaining seven hours.
If they do all that stuff that you said, they don't have time for community service other than the three hours.
Exactly, they don't have time.
Now, these, seven more hours going across the whole year. Absolutely, yeah.
And regular means has to be approved, so if you just sit there.
We're going to get to all those, we'll answer all those questions in a minute.
Is there one more question for you? Did you want to, our community stakeholders about this? Because, I mean, are parents on board with this?
We're going to get into that soon.
It won't be approved. People shove them like in my lawn, but if you say it's an approval, then it doesn't matter.
We're going to get to this. So, the remaining seven hours for a ninth and 10th grader have to be earned in the school. Okay, school service such as attending the zombie war, St. Halloween, habitat bill, etc. It has to be within the school structure.
Oh, then you're a part of the space, which is cool.
Correct. So the ninth and 10th grades have to be vested into the school, into our programs.
And obviously, you know, I'm sorry to interject, but this is definitely something that needs to be vetted out and discussed more thoroughly with a larger group of stakeholders, you know, parents and teachers as well.
That's what I'm saying, so was this shared with parents?
We're sharing it with the board first, all right? So that's the intent, is to present it to the board, to see what the board feels about the presentation, because it's definitely going to invest our time. But I think when you look at the way it's designed, you know, our, I think each of us believe that ninth and 10th graders, that sense of relatedness to the school community is so important, and making sure that they're invested in their school as a ninth grader, locking them in, not only shows better for attendance and discipline issues, but also for, you know, student performance. And I think.
You're speaking with 500 kids, the same, you still give an example of ninth grade, you're speaking to those 500 kids, that that's what they want to do, like my daughter, that's not what she wants to do.
Right, but again, we go back to the research that states that kids who are, who are committed to their school community, who are invested and feel like a part of the school community, will do better academically. And that's, and of course, you know, this is something that we're going to have.
But that doesn't apply in all cases though. Some kids are just introverted and they.
There's a tremendous amount of research that supports students' sense of relatedness to the school community and student progress.
I'm not saying that's not a factor, but I'm just saying that's not every child's profile. There are some kids that just don't, you know, and do academically well, but don't want to be involved.
Right, but again, we're, you know, we're looking at the entire, you know, grade level, and, you know, obviously there's going to be individual situations that we're going to come across.
Like a kid is an I for violin class, you're expecting all of them to do 10 hours of community service.
Well, I think that's why we're making this presentation, to kind of get the feedback from the board, um, in a kind of, in a direction. But it's something that, you know, Ken and his team believe strongly in both getting students involved in the school community as well as the larger community.
Was the original idea with this?
Was original? I think the, it came from, I think the, I can't remember which, which school.
Actually, many schools in South County do have this, Home Act being one of them, North Court does one. This team have made discussions just with us and our.
Required, to the state of the steering committee?
Now, this is one of the things that we've been discussing, seeing some of the goals that you folks have. I know we took, you know, we look at the clubs that we have and don't understand the driving thing. So one of the things we want to do is make sure that kids have clubs that they're interested in, and that we're going to have 25, 35, 45 kids in a club rather than more. So one of the things that we're looking at.
That's a thing that should be drawn, what's the kids, what?
Agreed, and if this, if this goes forward, one of the things we need to do for kids is say, you know what? You can earn some of your points towards your clubs and club membership. And that's, we're trying to build that involvement in the school.
And you don't want to involve them, we'll start with the kids and ask them what kind of help they want.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I did something I didn't want to do, I hijacked this presentation, I apologize, it's a mess, so I'll let you finish.
Now, I keep on, as Dean pointed out, this is our project, this is our plan. Obviously, everything we discussed today is up for discussion, whether it's committee-based, student-based. These are the examples for ninth and 10th grade. This is not written in stone, that's why it's an example. Same with the 11th and 12th grade examples. The difference between ninth and 10th grade community service process, uh, project is community and school. For the upperclassmen, you want to see more community involvement. You want to see, the first bullet is the same, one credit up to maximum three. The second bullet is different, in fact, that they, it's all community-based. It's outside the school. They can maybe, excuse me, they can volunteer with the American Cancer Center, an assisted living facility, the VA hospital. They can coach, they can do clinics, they can do something outside the school, we can represent us. So they're getting experience inside for two years, experience outside. Civics, Rotary, there's a million things that our students could do.
Does this decide from what they already do?
Well, we're not going to take comments from the, from the audience at this point, so let Mr. Costa finish.
Remember, this is a proposal. This is the answer we're doing tomorrow. As a proposal, this is the discussion. Young Leaders Service Credit Liaison. One of the things that we need to discuss in the interview is who is going to monitor 1,975 students every single year? One of the things that we're proposing, and we would definitely love to discuss with Board of Education, is creating Young Leader Service Credit Liaison. A person who is going to say, "Teach our special assignment, who will monitor all the students' progress, keep track of what they do, ensure the students experience our meeting, our standards of the high school, creating databases to track and monitor community service hours for all students, participate in the establishment of the criteria, the community service, serve the liaison between not only the school building, but the community as well, verify the students' community service hours, and contact informed parents regarding our students' progress. If Kenny's neglect on his opportunity to do his community service hours, this person will contact him by the parent and say, "It's now March, we've got one hour of community service, and we get on the ball." Okay, so this person, wherever they may be, will be that liaison between the school, the community, and for the students. Actually, this is something that we need to discuss with the Board of Education at a later date.
Could you work with the town also on this?
I'm sorry?
Work with the town also?
Would we? Yes, absolutely. That liaison would be that person to work with the towns, work with the civics, work with different businesses, the business associations. They would go out there, make the contacts, they would do the creating, show the contacts. It was okay, this Lee Kennedy, I have a spot for you if you're interested at.
The Alreum.
The Alreum, they could do two hours of planning on Saturday, if you're interested. If you go there, I know the first day's on the liaison, we can come for some of Lee Kennedy, she'll be there on Saturday at 1:00. You go there, you receive your letter, you bring it back to me, I file it, I record it, and you get it. That, that will be part of the process of the liaison. Moving forward to the Futuring Project, the next step, I was just going to be all professional development. First thing, one of the two is through collaboration exploration with our staff, we're going to examine different ways where we are aligning staff with common vision, encourage new methods of instruction, explore differentiated assessment techniques, integrate technology into our current curriculum, support our staff to integrate new concepts and educational ideologies, and force the collegiality amongst the staff and students. Now, all of these concepts for our professional development are completely aligned with 21st century learners and the five pillars of success. And whatever we decide to do with our professional development, each course, each session, each professional development, we'll try to align with any one of these concepts, those five pillars. And so we're geared around that 21st century figure. In summary, this entire process of the Futuring Project is a fluid process, it is a living process. Okay, this isn't something that happens overnight. Okay, this isn't something that happens overnight. This is something that happens next year. It is an ongoing process. And over the next few years, we would like to see, we would like to force the importance of community service, collaboration, initiative, and the social emotional needs of all of us students moving into school.
Don't know, you know, about this, about me, I like to ask some questions.
Put it down.
I got a few for you.
Sure.
I'm gonna use honor society as an example.
Okay.
How many of your students that is grade-wise eligible for honor society, but that doesn't do it because of the community piece, community, uh, community hours?
How many are eligible? Why is that why they choose not to because of?
They have grades. Of community service.
I couldn't get it down.
That's a good place to start. The other place.
I got a question, a few of them. Now, we have the students who we would like to see do community service.
Well, the point of my story is, is you have, you have children. And I know a few, because I was actually shocked by some of the kids who are not in honor society. And my question to them was, why aren't you in honor society? I don't wanna do the community service. Like they'll choose to come on, but again, so you're forcing kids, two thousand and nineteen-seventy-five, nineteen-hundred-and-seventy-five kids. But here's honor society, and actually, they could put on their, on their transcript, and they don't wanna do it. So, I mean, you know, so that's just a question that I have, and I.
Can I ask you one thing? These were kids who made a choice not to enter? Or these were kids who entered and that didn't meet the requirement?
No, they chose not to bother.
They chose not to.
Chose not to bother. I was shocked by a lot of kids that are not in it.
So, I have feedback now, a minute. So, say we do implement community service piece. Now, those kids automatically qualify for honor society.
But now they're forced into it. Now they're forced into it.
I think the community service piece is a great idea. You're probably gonna have to do some homework with the kids to figure out what it is for those kids who aren't in the sports, that aren't in the clubs, what it is that they wanna do for your school. And once you provide them with what they wanna do, they probably won't stop doing it. And the hours will just accumulate. That's gonna be the work. You're gonna have to figure out for that small population of kids who aren't in the musicals, who aren't in athletics, who aren't in the clubs, what is it that you wanna do for our school? And ask them, and then provide them that opportunity, and then they'll keep doing it.
What about the kids that are gonna work in it?
My other question is, there, I know last year, there was a couple of parents that came up to me and said that they had to go through the appeal process for the honor society, because some of their hours did not qualify for community service. So, just use that as a backdrop. What I'm concerned about is if you're gonna put this as a pillar for graduation, they have to have forty credits of this to graduate. Are we gonna start having a problem if kids aren't graduating because they couldn't fill these community service hours?
Yes.
Other for sale, the bigger problem is the community service liaison is gonna help in the creation of what community service hours are, and we spelled out it very clearly.
Alright, so how many appeals do you have for honor society because they didn't fit the criteria for community service? You have quite a few. So, that was my other question. Because one of the things.
Well, I gotta go back to that for a minute. Part of the reason why they're appealed, because, and I sat on that committee, and I've listened to many appeals in the, on the form of the National Honor Society, it's very clear on what is and what is not community service.
Right.
And for a lot of students that didn't make the grade, so to speak, for their hours, they met with the National Society, Honor Society advisors prior to going to the committee to go over their hours. And a lot of those students were told very specifically, you need a letter for this, you need a letter for that, this, those, and those account. And I would be honest to say that more than fifty percent of those kids didn't do what they were supposed to do to meet the requirement. So, the requirement is very clear on what the requirements for National Honor Society. And then after listening to the appeals, speaking with the two advisors for the National Honor Society, and meeting with a lot of those students, the truth is, they failed to do what they were supposed to do. They attempted to do the hours, and then they were told what to do to correct it, but didn't follow through.
So, then how is this gonna be any different for graduation?
Hopefully, the community service liaison, we'll be on topic earlier.
So, you're putting the stress of nineteen-hundred-and-seventy-five kids on this poor person?
Um.
I mean, that sounds pretty shocking.
And the parents, because they could.
It's really on the parents and the students.
And also too, you're putting the stress on parents. So, now, if I have three kids in the district, then you, I gotta get them thirty hours every year of driving them to ten different places.
You don't have to get them. This is what we're trying to do. They have to get them. We're trying to break that mold. It's not your responsibility. It's your responsibility to make sure that your child does the hours. It's your responsibility to make sure your child takes the initiative to get it done. And as parents, I'm a parent also, it's my responsibility to make sure my child is doing what she's supposed to be doing, just to stay on top of it. She has to take the initiative to get it done.
And they don't.
She has to do it. I don't have to sit there and do it.
So, that's what I'm saying, so I have two kids in high school, that's twenty hours. I have to drive them somewhere.
In a hundred and eighty days.
Yeah, I'm only, say, I only have two kids. Why don't you have people? I have three kids. You know, I've got this, I've sports involved, and I've got other things involved. Now, you're putting another responsibility on the parent, because now they have to guard their kids to these different community services. So, don't forget, this is not the only focus in your life, you know?
So, it's definitely something, obviously, you know, this is a topic that we need to throw and go through further to clarify. So, we will definitely set the topic.
And I think a lot, I think a lot of the activities will be after-school activities. So, when, when we have clubs that put together hundreds and hundreds of baskets for Thanksgiving this year for needy families, instead of having our YFS workers be solely responsible for that, and our PTA folks be responsible for that, it would be great to have kids be responsible for that. So, we would keep kids after school and send them along the four fifteen bus. So, I don't think it really becomes something that is an overwhelming responsibility of the parent. It's really the responsibility of the school to figure out things that can help kids make those hours and make it so that it's not that difficult to get. If you give three hours for the clubs and the sports, and then say, two hours for where is this weekend? I'm halfway done. It's not even November. So, you know, if I look at a ninth grader, and I look at the things that, the, the walking walk is this weekend. You get, you get a three K around the building, you get to give five dollars to the CFAC, and you've done your two, you've done another two hours. So, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be an overwhelming responsibility. This was put in place when I was in Santa Maria, we did not have one child. Granted, small school district, but we put a, an English teacher in, in charge of it as an extra stipend, and she made sure everybody had what they needed to get their graduation requirements. Comac has been doing this for twenty-plus years, never had a child not graduate due to these, these few hours. And they have a, they have more hours that they have to do. So, I think it's something that, it's really, and it's, and they're an amazing school district. So, I think it's something that the time is here to do these kind of things. I think we need to formalize it more as a school district, because I think we have a lot of kids doing great things and aren't really getting the credit for it that they deserve. So, we wanna fill our clubs, we wanna fill our sports, we wanna make the connections between our outside organizations and our young athletes.
Do you know your sports when you have kids getting caught on a team? Do you not necessarily feel like your sports?
Well, they could go be coaches and, and play in, in outside leagues. So, there, there are many things that kids can do. If they didn't make a team, they can go help coach a little league team. So, there, there are things that kids can do that would keep them busy, walk the street, and helping our community.
Whether they did homework.
When, uh, when you first were speaking, Mr. Costa, you mentioned administrators, you mentioned central office. But what was, what was your teacher's involvement input in this vision?
It was an high school.
Yeah, and it's, in his presentation, what was your feedback? What were your thoughts on this?
The feedback here from the directors, who meet with their, each teacher of the high school, like as individual, as departments.
So, the teachers helped, it helped.
The directors, when they meet with their departments, we have, we meet every two weeks as a building leadership team, the assistant principals, and the directors. This has been ongoing thinking this year and a half, discussions relating to the futureing project, where do we wanna see the high school go? Keep on, been in the position now for a year and a half. So, last year, there's a lot of discussions, this year, a lot of discussions. We're starting finally to formulate some plans, move the building in a different direction, moving forward. The conversations take place during their departmental meetings with their individual departments on a myriad of things. So, when they come back to me, the discussion is, what is it your department wants? What are you looking for? What do we need for the building? So, to answer the question, do I have any conversations like this with a teacher regarding this? The answer is no. The department and the directors have those conversations. And during our meetings, that's what we lay back to them, we'll formulate.
So, then they would have the teachers buy into this, they have the teachers buy into this vision?
I'm sorry?
So, they have, so they have the teachers.
They have not seen this. This is for you right now, for the Board of Education.
No, 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 I'm not saying the teachers. I'm saying, so your, your admins have.
My directors.
Yeah, your director.
The district directors, you'd say?
Okay.
Yes.
The people that you, as you're saying, they have conversations with people every two weeks.
Yes.
So, those people that you speak to, they have to buy in from the teachers, and then they, they came to you. Your admins came to you. Okay.
Yes. Answer your question. Well, the buy-in from the teachers is not, they haven't seen this presentation, the buy-in from the teachers.
Well, the buy-in, I would think it's a collective, uh, collective resources from those teachers.
Let me, let me explain. The conversation in department meetings, the tone, the tenor, the wants, the needs, the desires that come out from those meetings with the directors and their departments, it will help formulate this project. So, did they articulate, if they would see here with the directors? The answer is no. This is what comes from their meetings to our meeting, and a conversation about education. Conversations about how do we move it forward, how do we make it better? How do we go from that mediocrity or just good to great? So, those conversations inspire this conversation. And from those conversations, we formulated this plan. The academy structure came from the survey. The different academies came from conversations with the directors, who are in direct contact with the teaching staff. So, conceptually, without even really saying, yes, I'm on board, these concepts come from the building. These concepts come from the students. These are mine, I just pulled out of the air. This is based on a year and a half of discussion with the directors, with the assistant principals, with the staff members, and their departments. So, that's where this information and this process came from.
Academy person?
Yes.
In terms of the medical field, I know we, we had answered this a while ago, but really, it's not an academy. Would that be considered something we would consider making into an academy?
We would consider anything that the students and the staff wants. If there's a want and need for the medical academy, um, the answer is possibility. Because, now, if you think about the medical academy, first thing you have to do is have Mary, Dr. Losing, look at our current courses. What do we currently have in place that would fit into a medical academy?
We have something.
And then, then we look at the holes. What do we need to complete a medical academy or a concentration in the medical field? When we look at staffing and need. So, there is a possibility, absolutely. Again, something like that could be initiated through the expansion process.
So, one of the slides you touched on, and it was, to sum it up, is to gather the data. But it seems like for years, we're gathering data. So, the data, and I guess this is one question to you, Linda. So, all the data that we've gathered all these years, is this just another attempt to gather data that really goes nowhere? It's a recent case? Uh, well.
The metrics, the, the, that's the evidence of success.
I can hear none of them.
And that's something that we consistent to look at, to measure the progress of the different areas of the course.
Right, so what, why, so what data, whose specific data are you looking now that will change the course and make us good to great, as Mr. Costa had mentioned?
In that one slide, uh, the educational metrics. So, these are the metrics.
So, that's something new that we haven't done before?
We, we haven't done it aligned to a vision of where the district is going. Uh, we've done it aligned to student performance, uh, but not in consultation with the scope of sequence, uh, the skills that, that students are coming in with, the skills that they're doing. So, that's, that's where we're measuring each of those pieces.
Because I'm concerned all this information is gathered, and I've been here for years, we're gathering data, we're gathering data, it's gonna improve the district, improve the district, we're gonna move forward, we're gonna move forward. But I don't actually, I don't know how do I, how do I actually see with that information that was collected, where do I see it today? You know, like, where did, how do you, how do you?
We, we, we use data all the time. Um, we use it whether it's a first grade classroom in, in Idalawar that's, uh, you know, using a different model of destruction to inti- to integrate a tier-one separate, uh, for students. Um, you know, so it's, it's used a variety of different ways depending on the intention of the little group.
So, then the concept is changing this time, so to speak?
Well, every time you've put something into place, you need metrics to measure its success.
I, I agree with that.
And that's, so every time we put something into place, whether it be our literacy initiative, our math initiative, you know, we have metrics that we've established. Sometimes we talk about them, sometimes we don't. But one of the goals that we have is the transparency piece. When we're laying out a multi-year plan for you, uh, we wanna say to you that these are the metrics we're using to, to look at our effectiveness. And if we don't meet those, then we're not doing what we, what we said we were doing. So, that's, that's our intent.
Right, I guess, I guess I'll get a little more defining my question. Alright, so you, I think one of the slides I saw, you wanna increase AP. So, what percentage of students are we at now with AP? And what percentage of students would you like to see in the next year or two?
We can get you that data.
Yeah, because that's the thing, because I'm a math head, so I can't, I, that's how I centralize them.
Yeah, so we can, we can actually get you all of the, all of the granular data that you read in order to kind of see where we are. Uh, and we'll definitely provide a few some of you to start.
Yeah, that's how I, that's how I really.
It's not, it's not with this whole hours gathering data and figuring that out. This is a, Chris, it's, I said, this is a concept of what your intentions are, so we're all, because that part of the plan is gathering all that data and figuring out where we're at, where we're going, what we're gonna do to increase that, from what I.
And that's the process we've been, we've been through this year, is, is what's the baseline, if I'm sorry?
And I mentioned earlier about the fuzzy data. Fuzzy data is kind of like what we had before. Got that information as far as the conversations, the observations. The fuzzy data is when we gather, you are in our, our high school educational team meetings. That's all the data that helps put this together. The hard data is what, you know, we need to, the things you can actually measure, status assessments, score, student average.
Well, yes, that's my concern is, and I, I've been hearing it through years, and I'll give you a prime example. How are we gonna get more involvement, more kids taking AP tests, AP classes? Been hearing this for years.
Well, can I tell you how we use any data real quick? I'll go back to the fuzzy data.
So, I just wanna know the way.
The fuzzy data created this. So, he asked me, you know, we're looking at all this data and all, all the things. The fuzzy data created the futureing project. Or it's all the conversations, it's the observations, evaluation. That data actually helped formulate and create the futureing project. So, if he asks us how we actually use data to move forward, that's a great example of how we're moving forward, are using that.
Okay, that's, and that's my question. I think ERB is gonna get more kids taking AP, AP. Has that number increased over the years, or is it just something?
It has, it has slowly increased in certain ranks. And now with the addition, uh, over the past year and a half with the directors, um, it's more intentional to what we're doing. And we share the AP results with you, uh, on a yearly basis and participation rates.
Yes.
Um, we made some changes, you know, so, so we looked at participation rates at AP exams. Uh, we made a change, uh, in, at the high school, Mr. Costa and his team made a change with regards to the AP designation for courses and what the requirements are.
And the other big deal that we lost chemistry. We're doing chemistry every other year. Will we ever get back on course where we're gonna have chemistry every year, AP?
Let me answer the first question. So, so we're, we're, we're looking at that data, and, um, and that made a significant change in the way that the designation is going. So, we made that change. So, now, we're going to see this year, the impact of that implementation. So, the data would be an increased rate. Uh, with regards to the courses that we're offering, uh, we, going back to Mr. Costa's initial slide about the course evaluations, each of our department directors have gone through a lengthy course evaluation of each of their courses, and what are the sequences that are aligned to this, and see what are the obstacles that are causing kids to make different choices. Um, and we feel, based upon the recommendation that, uh, Dr. Losing made, uh, to Mr. Costa, that the changes they made within the science curriculum, the pathway, and sequence, um, will hopefully alleviate the issue that we have, uh, issue, this issue.
Yeah, because that was, yeah, that was disheartening to know, I mean.
And that's, you know, our goal is to, is to increase that participation, and there's a lot of different factors that go into it. One of the things that we identified was the sequence was a challenge.
It was unintended consequence, so, to the AP changing physics for two years.
That was. Swarming class.
It's, we wanna be competitive, but we're dropping classes.
Well, but you know what, Mylan, there was an unintended consequence from the AP, uh, the AP board, the college board, actually changing physics from an AB, BC, which you could have done in one year, to physics one and physics two.
Well, my son's doing physics two years.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. They changed that.
So, if it's normally one year, and then it changed to.
It, it was one year, it was, you could have taken physics AB or physics BC, and that was a one-year course. And then they would move on to a different AP course. And the AP changed that because they felt that the, the curriculum was too rich and rigorous and deep, and they gave an AP, they do physics one and physics two now. So, there was another unintended consequence that we had nothing to do with. Because your son might have taken chem AP as his final.
He's a sophomore, that's why I'm asking.
Well, but he's in physics, he's in the second year of physics, where if he took physics BC last year, he might have taken chem this year. And so, the AP changing, changed that for a lot of schools as well. So, these are things that as, that they come, they, they come to our attention by looking at the data and digging deep into the curriculum to make sure that there are no roadblocks in the curriculum to stop kids from moving forward to more challenging rigorous courses. And sometimes we need to create rigor in the, in the underclassmen courses to say to kids, you've challenged this, you've done great, now move on to the next level. And so, all of that's being done by the departments right now.
Okay, so I saw in one of the slides that, uh, the intent is to evaluate programs. Anything. Anything specific, a slide from the academy, is it like an IB or AP capstone?
We, so, um, the, the first initial project that the Mr. Costa and his team undertook was the looking at each of the individual departments. Um, the next piece is they did go out on a visitation to Hewitt Woodmere to do a, a visit to an AP capstone, uh, where the classes are setting up, an IB visit to, um, Comback.
Are they kind of boarding the environment?
So we, we invited towards the capstone as well.
Yeah, I could, I could make a, I could.
Uh, but we could definitely, you know, make, well, of course, extend the visitation to the IB.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, one last question. On the final recommendations that are put over the external committees, so I, I see here that you have teachers, administrative, industry, industry, industry.
Industry.
Industry, yes, excuse me, industry, industry leaders and students. How can the community is not part of the external, uh, review? And what impact does the industry, uh, leaders have on this piece?
This was also based off the business model, um, part of, part of this process. And again, this is a living process. If there is something wrong with this, then we need to, we're going to do something. This was the business model that Brian Frank and Ray Losing used to do the exploration process for the STEM and the Business Academy. So we're following a very similar process moving forward. Of course, there's anything you have to tweak or change, absolutely.
That was mandated by the state. In order to become CTE certified, having industry leaders come and look at your curriculum, and that's why the business advisory committee was so instrumental.
Do they have curriculum experience or do they have educational experience that have an impact on this?
No, but they know what they need in, in entry level business folks, and that's why the state is asking, was requiring that.
But for a non-CTE course, we don't necessarily need to be.
Doesn't need to be required.
It's not required. We incorporate it, it's not required.
My only question, Doctor.
Lee, please put your microphone on.
Can you put some money in the budget for new ones?
Yes, excuse me, fifteen million dollars.
Maybe we could buy some.
My question is, we joined the steering committee, we were talking about different academies, um, cooking. The medical, which I think is, is probably something that is a true profession for many students, all the types of medical, and I know, you know, there are forces out there. When do you start, when do you start doing this process? Will be this year or next year? Or to build upon the business thing that's been around for a while, but it may really be built on? How does, what is the process? I'm just curious.
The process, we go back to the timeline slide, the presentation. From this year, the exploration took place for business staff, as far as going. Those two academies are currently in the course of Shagat, two thousand eighteen, uh, seventeen, excuse me. Next year in seventeen eighteen, we start the exploration for computer and cybersecurity. So the exploration process can have student surveys, committees, the exploration work we currently have, what we need to offer to make it whole, is it worth money kind of thing? That takes place next year.
You're going to do what?
Next year. Next year we're doing, it is a very large task. It is, it's, it's a very team, very time consuming endeavor to make sure it's done correctly. The difference between some of the kinds that you're talking about, ontology, cocaine, some of the things that we discussed at the steering committee, from my understanding, correct or wrong, that's in lieu of a BOSI's placement. So we have those kids come here and earn that same accreditation that they would add BOSI's.
I didn't think that way, but.
But the current academy structure here is accreditation on your transcript and maybe a possible diploma. So you're not being, unless you're taking a CTE certified course, you're not being certified by the state. So for example, if we did a cosmetology academy, we wouldn't hold the same weight as a BOSI's placement.
I wasn't, I didn't think we were comparing ourselves, you know, so we would be using BOSI's necessarily. I thought, because we had a person, part of it was talking about nursing and how much money, uh, you make in that field and how important that field is. And then we'd look to see what courses we had. And we have some pretty strong courses, which really could be part of, probably, I would think a CTE academy, that's already there.
Could be.
Uh, it's there, I mean, and there's, there are pretty, pretty good courses. And we have those right in place. To build upon that, because we have it already, would be great. Building in business, we've had that for a number of years now, but we've never built onto it.
Correct.
So, you know, I mean, there's advertising model, there's many other models that you could add to that, but it was never built on. So rather than continue on with new models, why don't we finish the models we have? What we have in there, I'm only making a suggestion, I could be all over. But, you know, we have those, we have some of those courses already in place. And to build upon them might be a lot easier than to start new, even though I think technology is definitely important in today's day and age.
Well, when Linda first worked the academies, her first question I asked her was how much? And you told me.
How much what?
How much would cost to start an academy? And you told me how much it would be.
It depends.
Well, you usually told me zero dollars.
Well, the business had me zero dollars.
Right.
Most, most of the academies that we're looking at are absolutely zero dollars. When you start looking at a culinary, where you are supplanting for BOSI's.
Well, no, please, I'm just, I'm thinking that being off of twelve week.
Yeah.
That was the zero dollars, all right, wouldn't we want to start there? Well, there's one, it is, that you do only on the nursing one, that whole profession.
Well, I think that was part of the STEM idea, um, that, that we would, we would begin with a STEM, almost like a general arts STEM, uh, general science STEM, and then build, build academies off of that base.
Would you, would you work on a science research or that's a separate?
Maybe, I mean, uh.
Science research is part of the STEM academy.
Part of STEM.
So then you would be building off of science research?
Or, or, or something like this.
No, 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 she was referring to the STEM. So what time would you?
Science research is part of the STEM academy.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, would you be building upon science research to enhance your STEM program?
No, the STEM curriculum is very elegant, Ray Losing, that's going to be a reevaluation, they need to add additional courses or lose courses. The STEM program is a four-year program, it's already aligned with the STEM academy. So in order to really earn your STEM accreditation, so to speak, you have to be enrolled in science research for four years, starting as a freshman.
Oh, so if you're enrolled in science research for four years, what does that get you?
So designation, you mean for the academy?
Right, yeah.
That's only part of it. You also, in addition, you need the four years of science, those are four years of math, and two credits in technology. Of those four science credits, you need two AP courses. Of the four credits in math, you need two AP courses, two technology, and a, and a capstone project or research, research paper or research project based on your four years of science research. So ultimately, it's fourteen credits total to be part of the science STEM academy.
So very similar to what we do at the house.
Very similar, it's five point five. Where the capstone be in the VE course. So the STEM.
So again, that's, uh, there's academies came from the initial survey to give the kids, which will be taken with you each year. Um, because some of these things are mentioned, doesn't mean that they will be in, in the pipeline for the coming years. Um, if students' needs or interests change, uh, we'll be responsive to that. But again, you know, as, as we said earlier, we're looking to take the electives that we currently have, we have a very robust, uh, offerings for our students. And just make sure that we're connecting those unconnected electives so that students have, um, you know, a more targeted kind of experience if they so choose to.
Can I just add one more thing? I don't know if I articulated it well enough, or really got my point close. The, the, the example of the liberal studies that I gave is really what the academy is about. It's that concentration for like, for a kid who does, wants to try something different. This is not for all students. This is for a select group of students, like who wanted to look and, and do a concentration, but that one won't be minor in an area of interest. They still have to fulfill their regular requirements. If I'm a business minded kid, a science minded student, um, if I'm interested in computer technology, computer programming, cybersecurity, construction systems, the music and arts, industry itself, right now, we don't really offer a package for that. They still have to take all their courses. And whatever they can fit in elective, they fit in elective. This gives that student the opportunity to try something different. So this really targets more of our kids. More of our students will be more engaged in learning because this is a pathway that they want to take. You know, I, I, I don't want, I don't want to get caught up on the academy structure. It's for everyone, we're changing everything, it's not. It's for a small niche of students who want to have a concentration in an area of interest. And hopefully that concentration gets them more engaged, more involved in what we do here. So I, I mean, I don't know if I truly articulated that point where I'm trying to make analogy of liberal studies and minors. Because, but that's what it is. It's for the rest of the students who need something additional or different than the regular.
Laura, I would find it interesting, because I do some feedback on the business, uh, that's been going on, four years, whatever, five years. How many of those kids went into business?
Really, you got to put your microphone on.
Sure, I know, other kids went into business.
You know you're going to get.
Went into business. Thinking of those courses.
But I, I would find it interesting, if you get some results. But just be interesting, and also be interesting if, if I.
Actually, that's a good question, Costa.
My curiosity, what, what's going on with those expenses, the medical expenses that are there? Well, how many students are taking them? That would be interesting.
Yeah, I would like, I would like the information on the kids that went through the business on, you know, the business track. How many, how many of them did go off to college and pursue further that business track? I'd be curious to know the answer. Well, yeah, that should be a good thing too, yeah.
I don't know if it exists before you say the question.
Uh, we, I think it's all about the industry.
I'd like to thank Mr. Costa for his.
Yes. Looking forward to it, Justin.
Stop, you have two minutes.
Good night.
Okay. Just want to talk about some of the factors that, um, affect the, the fiscal climate that we're in that affect the budget process. I will have a larger presentation on the tax levy cap down as we progress and through the budget calendar that's set out.
Can you put your microphone on? I'm sorry, Sharon. If you guys sat here and you heard this thing in the ear, you'd be saying the same thing.
I just can't believe I'm not loud enough. Um, the calculation for the tax levy cap allows for you to deviate from the allowable levy growth factor, which you see in the second from the bottom bullet, is one point two six percent for, oh, that should say seventeen eighteen. As compared to last year where it was zero point one two. You can deviate from the one point two six if your pension contribution rates are an increase of at least two percent. Uh, however, neither of the pension contribution rates is in excess of two percent going into seven eighteen from, uh, seventeen eighteen from sixteen seventeen. Uh, we actually have a decrease in the IRS contribution rate. Uh, the estimate now is at fifteen point three as compared to fifteen point five for last year. And the TRS rate is continuing to drop down as it has in the past couple of years. Um, dropping from eleven point seven two for the sixteen seventeen year to the range of nine and a half to ten and a half percent. Another factor in the tax levy calculation is how much has the brick and mortar construction changed? Which creates the, the, um, base for assessing tax, um, taxes in the district. It's at a flat one point oh, down slightly from the one point zero 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 eight that it was for sixteen seventeen. And also there will be the capital tax levy exclusion possibly if, um, the difference between our building aid and our debt service warrants that. Um, this just shows that one piece where it's, that's highlighted at one point two six, it'll be easier to see on the next slide. How the allowable levy growth factor is calculated every year for, um, entities such as school districts where our year end is June thirty. The CPI for all urban consumers is, um, averaged out for the whole calendar year to arrive at what the allowable levy growth factor was. So that just came out now, that's the one point two six that I told you about. And you can see at the end of this graph, the one point two six for seventeen eighteen and the fluctuations that we've seen in that allowable growth factor over the past several years. Uh, the executive budget came out, the proposed budget, I'm sure, I'm sure many of you heard about that. Um, of note is that our foundation aid is up one point two percent over the sixteen seventeen amount. All formula based aids are up two point four eight percent. However, that's really skewed, a more realistic number to look at is point nine oh. Uh, because when you apply, when you start the construction pro- project, you have to file your initial form. Um, the filing of that, which includes an estimate for the cost of the project being done, triggers for that building aid to be included in that total formula based aid amount, which you will not actually see the aid for. Um, if you don't have a final cost report in, if you don't have your substantial completion in, which is like a certificate about, say, for a house. So I need to back out that building aid when I'm doing the tax levy calculation for those projects which will not be done as of June thirty. Which means we will not get the aid that's included in that number. So some of these things are a little misleading. Um, this, this is pretty accurate, the one point two and a point nine oh percent increase in total formula based aid overall, based on the estimates we have so far. This gives you an idea of where the formula based aids have gone over the years. You see a big jump from fifteen sixteen to sixteen seventeen because of the ending of the gap elimination adjustment. We see that enrollment is declining. The variations between the two, between the years aren't as large as they look in this graph. Um, it's been, you know, in the one point something range from year to year. Uh, this year happens to be the largest drop from the preceding year at two point two percent. But overall, all of these drops average out to one point seven.
Per year?
Per year. And I could tell you what it is for each year.
No, that's okay.
We have a projection.
I just wanted to clarify what you said.
Okay. Um, while we're all grateful that the gap elimination adjustment is over, that just means they stopped taking it away on a current basis. That doesn't mean all of these amounts, three point four million, six point eight million and so on, from the six years from ten eleven to fifteen sixteen, which total up to that last bar of thirty point almost two million dollars. That doesn't mean that's ever going to be given back, or was given back. They just stopped, look, we don't see these bars anymore, there's not a bar for sixteen seventeen. So that's quite a, a chunk of change. We're glad they stopped taking it, but they never gave it back. Um, this is just the, uh, projected calendar that I'll be following for my, my future presentations as we move toward our budget vote, which is May sixteen. This is the process. And this presentation will be up on the website, so you don't have to try to calculate all this down.
I'm done.
That's just, uh.
She started with that one.
Better background. Thank you, Sharon.
Moving on to lovely comments.
Our leader and me.
Oh, sorry. One more. Leader and me.
That was me. I read part of the book, Leader and Me. And then I was in, over at Boston. And I was talking to a teacher, I was in the classroom, talking to the students. And it was amazing.
And it was amazing. Each and every student had something to say. They participated. And I'll just say, one student, she was explaining how she had a problem with her brother that was four, and the steps that she took, not her brother, that she took to stop that fighting. She spoke about it, was so proud. Other kids, they get in trouble. I forget the word they used. Do you remember the word, Miley? That there was one word that they used. But basically, they were, they had to look at, reflect on...
Why don't you just put in goals?
No, they would put the first one.
Weak. Weak, call it weak.
The weak. They had to just, they got sent out to the principal's office. They spoke to the principal about what they did wrong, and in such a way that the principal just dismissed them. Since they solved the problem, they realized what they did, they accepted what they did, they shared what they did. And it was just amazing to watch this whole process. We just got a little blurb about a young boy, in order to get a job in a school, you have to pull out a resume. He filled out a resume, had to get a reference, his aunt wrote the reference. If you read the reference, it's amazing. If you read what he wrote, just as he wanted to be a board cleaner, a board, what he showed, what his strengths were, and it was amazing. Now, the problem I had, plus the teacher said she never saw anything like this in her 15 years, and other teachers were saying the same thing. So then I thought about it, and I thought, okay, now these children in Boston will now be going on to sixth grade. They don't do that then. Other schools don't have, don't do what they're doing over there in Boston. And because I think it's a wonderful program, and based on what the kids were saying, not the adults, I think we should just push it into all those schools and stop pulling around. Because now, at doing this to sixth grade and seventh grade, these kids need to, you know, they can be the helpers, the help teachers. And we have Gail Colton who's retiring, and I'm sure she'll come back and do Leader of the Day, that does the stipend, that's cheaper than getting consultants. You know, it could be a nice package. So for the budget is, you know, that's why I thought I'd mention it now, because it is a budgetary item, but I think it's good for all kids, not just for some kids.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Moving on to public comment, it's up to 30 minutes in length. This section of the agenda gives the Board of Education an opportunity to recognize persons who wish to raise a question or to make a brief statement on matters including but not limited to agenda items. The time available will be limited to three minutes. For one or more topics, comments should be kept as brief as possible and relate to school matters. Persons wishing to speak during the public participation portion of the agenda are asked to adhere to the following guidelines. Step to the podium. Address the board president only. You may address one or more topics at the time allotted. Individual employees, parents, or children should not be identified by name, title, position, grade, or building. The Board has the final decision in determining the length of time, the appropriateness of the subject being presented, and the suitability of the time for such a presentation.
First of all, I just wanted to thank Mylin for attending the Brooklyn Civic Association meeting the other night. They had a presentation done by Laura Ahern, who is in charge of the Crime Victims Center. I sent Mylin back here to the Board with a whole big bunch of packets of stuff. They do education for children in all grades, and I think it's something they do for free, and I think it's something that we should definitely look into. I currently have a basketball stalking league, so that's a lot of fun. I hate to have it stalk the child. It stalks the child. So thanks, Mylin, for coming today.
Thank you, Sharon.
I wanted to talk about a couple of things. Forced community service. There are a lot of children, I'm a volunteer, because many of us in here are volunteers. You usually see the same dozen or so people, always volunteering for the same things. And while I think that children should do community service, as a matter of fact, I've forced my own children to do way more than 40 hours of community service. That's my choice to do that. Will they do it now that they're adults because I forced them into it? I don't know. They might, they might see how much good it does and how happy it makes me to get back to my community, but they might say, you know what? I was forced into it as a child, and now I'm never doing it again. I don't think we should ever force a child into doing something that should be there and issued for the parents, the parents' rights to tell them what to do for that. As far as graduation requirements, there are kids that have to work after school, and they can't participate in some of the things that you guys talked about here tonight. So you definitely need to look into that before you make it a requirement. Also, I fail to see how playing football is community service, but maybe someone can explain that to me another time. The other thing that I spoke to Mr. Costa about, and I told him I was gonna ask tonight, was the high school parking. For years, seniors have been able to park, and there was one year that seniors, there were so many seniors that the parking lot was full. Now, the parking lot is half-empty. So what we used to do when the parking lot was half-empty was we used to offer it to juniors who got their permit. I understand that that's no longer a policy, and I wanted to know why.
Senior license, they got their senior license.
They now have their senior license, and their parking lot's empty, and seniors are not filling it up. Why aren't the juniors getting a spot? I did hear that some of them are working around this by taking their buddy's pass and making a really great photocopy and laminating and putting it in their window, while others who try to do it the right way and go to the school and ask for a permit. Maybe they have a job after school, and they drive, if they wanna drive to school and get to their job, they're being told no.
My understanding, the other time you could get one of the juniors if you had a job.
My time's still going?
It's a lab.
Okay. Well, that's not the case, because there is, I know of a specific instance that the child has a job, asks for a spot, the parking lot is empty. I've seen pictures of parking lots.
I can't speak for how it is now.
That's empty.
You had a job, and you can prove you had a job, is it...
You were an 11th grader.
Did Mr. Costa have a response to you?
He said he would tell me if anybody left, so. I'd love to know the reasoning.
The policy says that it is...
Seniors, but it wasn't only...
No, it is given to juniors if they have the, if they have the space.
Well, actually, the board policy says seniors only.
The board policy I looked up does say seniors only.
I read something, I just got paperwork, I read it because I have a junior.
Yeah, right.
It said if there was availability, then it...
Right, that's how it always was.
The junior had a senior license, then yes, they would...
Right, that's how, how it always was in the past, but this year, it's not like that, and I, I wanna know why.
So we'll have to ask Mr. Costa.
Honestly, the Board of Education policy says seniors.
I read the policy, I read it yesterday, and it does only say seniors, but I got the same paper that Craig has, because I also have a junior.
So in the paperwork for an application, it actually says juniors are allowed if they can make a job.
If the seniors, right, if they have a job, and if the seniors haven't filled up the lot.
Yes.
Right.
That's a valid, but those two are coincidental.
And if there's a valid, right.
One way or the other, one way or the other, those two are coincidental, that's a problem.
Right, so if we have half the lot is open, I don't see why we don't open it up to juniors. And it doesn't affect my kid, she's not gonna have her license until school is almost over, so we're just saying.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fadigo.
That's it, I'm out of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Kristina Ramea, and I just wanted to know if, I'm not sure, since Mr. Costa left, and everybody knows the answer to this. The hours that the kids are already getting for Honor Society, would they apply to these hours?
In my estimation, they would, but we would have to bet that out, because I think they should.
Yeah, because the children that are in Honor Society, the children that are doing sports and they are doing clubs, don't have any extra time. I mean, I can tell you from my own childhood, he gets four hours sleep a night after doing sports and doing his E P homework. I mean, there's just no more you can get from those kids.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening.
Thank you.
Had some bad news today. We heard about a resignation, and that a bunch of parents and teachers were petitioning for this gentleman to give in tenure. So since that's over, I would like to know what are your hiring practices for principals, and is there anything that we can do to be involved in the hiring? Because apparently, we like what we had, and we'd like to be involved in the next hiring to make sure we get something as good, if not better.
Well, that's something that, we actually have two principals, one is, we have two resignations tonight, two principals, and we will be coming to the schools to do interviews and get some feedback as to what we're looking for. Also, what happens in the process is, we fill this room up with volunteer parents, teachers, administrators from the district to ask questions of the final four candidates that have come through the process. So there's multiple layers to the process.
Is there a schedule?
Is there a schedule?
Yes.
It's posted right now, the first opening we knew about earlier, so we do have the posting out. We will probably ask our consultant, Deb Murphy, who works with a lot of our different groups, to meet with different stakeholders to get feedback as to what we're looking for.
It's not scheduled as of right now.
No, we don't have...
Those things are not closed.
Did you send that to council, Linda?
Duh.
The job vacancy, or no?
It was in the Times, I don't know if we posted an internal yet.
Okay.
So it should be sent.
As soon as it gets posted internal, PTA sends it out to all the units.
Let me get one resignation and one retired, Craig, you said two. One resignation, I'm sorry, one, well, resignation for a purpose of retirement and another resignation tonight.
Just wait, thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I have a junior this year.
You gotta get a better program, Andrea.
There's something with the internet tonight, it's very slow.
Wifi's a little... So anyway, I have a junior this year as well, who was denied parking. She did have a job all summer long, saved up her money, got herself a car, wanted to continue the job as soon as soccer ended, and she was okay to wait until then to continue working, and she was denied the spot, she had to give up the job. So we're having trouble supporting the car, the insurance, you know, we needed her help. We can't do it, five kids, five cars, seven insurance, you know. So anyway, she was doing this on her own, and it was taken away because of the parking. She can't get to the job if she takes the bus home on time. So now this job doesn't come open again, and my correspondent wrote email to Mr. Costa saying, you know, it's open again, is there any possibility that, you know, she can park? And it's flat, I don't know. I can tell you, up until the point that I was corresponding with him in the beginning of the year, because she turned 17 in September, and had her license, and worked for that another month or two, and got a car. When I stopped corresponding with him in, I don't know, late October, November, it was a matter of seven juniors that wanted to park. But no, because, you know, last year was a big year, was a lot of kids, some kids were parking on her, I still have issues last year again, but they've never been banned from it before. You know, I feel we're being punished this year for what went on last year, and I get it, you know, safety issues and things gotta come first, but just because, you know, you see on the slides, the enrollment has gone down. I just, I have a friend who called, her daughter was approached on the bus stop in the darkness of that day, her parents never let her ride the bus again. So they have trouble getting her to school. Now she became 17 and can do her thing, and they were like, they don't wait to get there. Father has parked every single morning, getting me getting out, getting to work on time. She was the, you know, there's just no reason, the lot is half-full. It's half-full, I don't know if you've had the opportunity, but back there, it's half, there's plenty, plenty, plenty of...
I can show you some pictures.
So it would be nice if you could look into it and reverse it, and maybe the kid could get her job back and not have to go through so much. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You want, it's set? Go, okay. Fiscal outlook, thank you, Sharon, for that. I have to say, the entire BAC committee is here tonight. Yay.
All four of you?
Great.
All three of us.
High five, guys.
Okay, so anyway, over the past week, I sent a letter on behalf of Connecto Council of PTA regarding the BAC, and one question, you know, it was very hard for all the volunteer organizations to get a volunteer, willing, able, and knowledgeable volunteer to volunteer for not only the current organization, but the BAC. So we care. We care about the budget, it's just we don't have enough time. Is there a way to add members to the BAC throughout its duration, or is it closed?
We gave you more spots last time.
What do you think?
How many additional spots?
Up to three.
Up to three additional spots were appointed last time.
I don't think you had before to start, so you shouldn't have seven spots.
I've been looking at the minutes from last meeting, there are minutes, people. So I apologize, not all of us here, because I have...
We gave you additional spots.
I think it was seven, six or seven total.
It was seven, you had four.
You had four, and we gave an additional three.
Well, I was an alternate.
Which was mine, big.
I said the three.
Always my alternate.
That's okay.
So there's a total of seven spots that you can fill.
So, I'm sorry, I don't know what you mean by that, I can fill?
You have three, you can fill four more spots. We approved seven last meeting.
Seven people in total.
Correct.
For 11 PTAs, no, 12 PTA units, three, six...
That's what was asked for, there was four at the time, and it was asked for an additional three.
Carrie, you can get more people than people we've given.
We're trying to, we're trying to keep it low, we just...
Okay, I'm just trying to understand. Also, my concern on that was timing and stuff. If it can be, an annual, BAC suggested that last year. I'd like to see that happen on behalf of a prior member of the BAC as well as Connecto Council PTA president. My second thing is on the agenda tonight, you have MOAs, health buyout for payback, as well as retirement incentive, retro. I guess I need kind of a layman's term as to what that is. It sounds like it's, it sounds, before I get to that, because you're gonna answer that. Fiscal outlook. On February 4th, 2017, is a Saturday morning, this legislative forum, of which I have four PTA, I was invited, given five seats from Dr. Adams, and we have four PTA members that are going. With regard to the cap, the budget, the 1.26, I think if a, as far as I understand from last year, if a school district does not go at the cap, the top, the max, they get hit the next year. I think as a district, we can do something to change New York State ruling on that, because that is ridiculous. Because if a school district does not go to the maximum amount, they can tax the taxpayers because they're being financially responsible, they should not be hit with a lower cap the following year. Because if anything, if they go lower, they might need a little bit more money next year. So they should not be, it should not be based on this, this calculation should not be based on what they took last year. So to maximize what we get the next year, we have to take the maximum for this year. It sounds absolutely insane. I want help from Connecto to really say something at this legislative forum, because it's ridiculous. And when they start, look at this 2%, it's never been 2% except for the first year. The calculation is so convoluted and it's not healthy for fiscal responsibility. Let's put it that way. So I am personally inviting all Board of Ed members, administrators, to come to legislative forum. You're paid for a full table. I've got four PTA members coming.
Do your BAC members wanna come?
I'll go.
I put it out to you.
I haven't figured I'm doing anything.
Yeah, the 4:30 in the morning. Good, I got this out.
I'll be sleeping, sorry.
I'm working.
Well, that's actually a good thing.
I don't have anything on the 4th.
It's a target. The MOA is just a little bit of a clarification on what it means, layman's term.
Sure. The MOA is, in each, in each, there's, well...
I'm sorry, there's two groups.
There's several, several of them.
And the other one was the...
Yes, I think, thank you.
The other one was the...
The insurance buyback was anybody who was scheduled to receive the buyback, if they had double insurance and had proof of that, our attorneys for the past, I don't know, whether it was a year, year and a half, had suggested to hold on to the monies and not give the buyback to those units, whereas some school districts, like in my case, we were receiving the buyback all along. The final court decision, until the final court decision was made, the final court decision has been rendered, and all the attorneys are in agreement that at this point, it is not, it was ruled in the favor of the, I guess, not the insurance company, that they would not be able to eliminate the buyback, so therefore, we were, had to pay out the monies. So we've agreed... So we've agreed to, um, pay the back monies that we had been putting aside. So it's, the money was there, it was already, you know, agreed upon, and that's what those two, the M O A for the buyback is.
Is it only if the spouse is also in the New York State Medical? It sounded, it looked like.
They both had to be part of N Y ship, N Y ship was suing, um.
Because they're paying double, really, they're paying for the family, spouse, they're paying for an employee and a spouse,
Well, not realistically, realistically, they're suing.
And the spouse over here is also an employee, but it's getting.
No, they were, what they were trying, they wanted you to pay double.
That's what they wanted, what they wanted was to pay double, they wanted.
They wanted, they wanted the school district to pay double, or basically me to say, like, my wife and I both work in Redwood.
Okay, thank you for using example.
So, my, my wife, my wife, my wife gets the buyback. Their goal was to either make the school.
So she's covered under you.
She's covered under me in a family plan.
Okay.
So she received fifty percent of what her portion she would have paid, not the whole thing. You know, of what the district portion was, I'm sorry, the district portion, of the district portion, right.
Fifty percent of what the district would have paid if she took single life insurance.
Correct, no.
Single, single medical coverage.
Actually, the family plan, because she could pay the family, just family.
Family plan. Fifty percent of.
If she had taken the family plan originally, yes, you, so fifty percent. So at that point, they were looking for districts to pay for both people to be involved in the internals, that's what their goal. Their goal was to gain money and gain membership, and take the advantage of what, right.
I see, so they wanted family coverage from you and family coverage from your wife.
Or, the option was, I have family coverage and she has nothing. So most people that I spoke to would say, well, for the twenty percent of whatever it is you're gonna pay, I'll pay the twenty percent in premiums, the district's gonna get hit with eighty percent, and now I'll be able to get my copays back and all the other things, and it'll actually wind up costing me nothing. But the district's gonna wind up taking a huge hit. So it was actually a fight for the districts to save money, not so much, not so much the teachers.
So the district, instead of paying eighty percent? Instead of the district paying eighty percent, of the family coverage, you're paying forty?
They're not paying, they're paying fifty percent of the eighty, correct, they're paying forty percent.
Right. So, um, and the monies, I think it was from two thousand and twelve?
It could have been back back that far, yes, that was the original, probably the original date.
I think that was the date in there, and, but it's retroactive, or money has been set aside since one one fifteen? I'm going off the top of my head, I'm looking at.
It's only three, there were three vials, there were three vials, and it stopped.
Three, correct, it's a hundred and a half.
Okay, and the money's been put aside or allocated for that, so every, all the, um, contracts on there, money's been aside,
Correct.
So it's already money that's been squirreled away?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
And stuff like that.
Yeah.
Okay, and how do they read now? They read, so there is a buyback? That, with the legal, there is a buyback?
There was, there was always, there was always a buyback, it was just basically suspended for a period of time while the court was,
Gotcha.
while the case was in court for that last three payments, which is about a year and a half.
Okay.
Because the court was, originally the case was brought probably earlier on in two thousand twelve, but they didn't decide to, once it, it was, it was, there was adjudication in the favor of the insurance companies at some point. So at that point, and then there was an appeal.
Gotcha.
So at that point, when the appeal went forward, many attorneys decided, we're gonna hold on to the money. Some districts said, nope, we're gonna continue to give it to our people, and we'll wait to see what the final case is.
Okay, so they weren't obligated to give the buyback at that point? Right, because it was under, it was under the deal?
No, because the ruling, the ruling was in the favor of the insurance companies. But being as it was appealed, there was no final ruling.
Okay.
So they weren't obligated, you're right.
Thank you, thank you very much. And the, um, retirement incentive, it seems like it's, I thought there was never a, I thought there was a policy or a.
There is.
Or, isn't it, the old M O A, did it expire about the one year?
You have to, you have to apply a year in advance for the ten percent.
Right.
Um, we've just decided to accept any resignations now and give them the ten percent.
Okay, so let me make sure I understand, there's always been, if you decide to retire a year in advance? Or you announce your retirement one year in advance, you give the ten percent.
No, it's a provision. It's just, we suspended a year pass on that provision.
So this is a one time, okay, you forgot to.
It's pending.
Why?
Well, because of the, if you choose not to do it.
No, well, in January, I'm sorry, in June, I guess, or the end of last school year, if they decided not to retire, is there, somebody, how many people decided not to retire June? June seventeen, in June sixteen, they didn't do it. But now, they're given an extra six months to say, oh, you know what, I'll retire. Why are we opening this window again for six months?
Could they save the district?
Special case for a special person?
It saves the district, thousands, maybe sixty thousand dollars for each person.
How much was it, seventy thousand? But they didn't think it was worth it, the ten percent in June? Why are we opening the window to give them ten percent now? They didn't think it was worth it in June.
Next, next June, then they'll stay an extra year, and then they'll get the ten percent. But we looked at the numbers, you know, we looked at the numbers, and it made sense to let them go, because not only might we save sixty thousand dollars for each person, we might not even have to fill that position.
Right, so they might have full savings.
So how many people are anticipating, or how many are eligible? In this, we know, period.
There are good times.
Practically twenty are eligible.
Twenty eligible?
Right, and we'll know after the week decides to approve.
And this is for just the C T A, is that correct?
The C T A, they have it till one thirty, one seventeen.
Yes, I saw that. One thirty one, so we'll know in a week. Okay, thank you very much.
I'm not sure if I'm allowed to ask this kind of question, so if I'm not coming on. Is there a place for parents to get involved with the location, um, special programs? And toward concentration, special programs in one building, instead of it being evenly distributed throughout the district? Like, or is that something that's not even, um, an issue that parents can be involved?
Can we, the government, we need a special program?
Yeah, um, just, I know it's on the table at the last Uptown meeting about, um, Sycamore and Duffield having all the self-continents integrated in one building, so that they could go back and forth. And, I don't know, I theoretically agree that all the services should be in one area, because while it would be great for someone who was in those buildings, it was their home buildings, for many students who are not in those home buildings, they would be forced to be in an alien situation and not have their peers, um, around them. And also, just the specialist burden in one building would be significantly more than the specialists, you know, keys loaded in another building, which would kind of just change populations in all buildings. One building having a significant concentration in a lot of specialty, and other buildings having no concentration or very limited concentrations. And I just don't know if there's a newer place for parents to input into how the population can look. You know, and how that would change.
I'm going to conversation with you, it would be great if we can connect with you.
Okay. Okay, I just, I, like I said, I'm not sure if this is right for them, but I just, you know, I would like to be involved, because I think it would be a very important decision.
All right, this is going to J, recommended action, personnel matters. Uh, schedule one, resignations, terminations, leaves of absence. Motion, motion?
Second.
Questions? In favor?
Aye.
Number two, schedule two, appointments, tenure, salary changes.
Second.
Any questions? Uh, number three, this is what be added, the end of schedule, uh, let's see. Schedule one.
Second.
Aye.
Any questions, we're good?
Aye.
So we move and take. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, consent agenda. Uh, need a motion and a second to approve items two through four. Second. Any questions on the board? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Okay, then I'll talk about it now.
Just turn your microphone on.
Well, I remember, you know, I remember I did it out for a while, and parking for juniors, if they had a job. Um, because my son had a job, and, and he was questioned, thinking it was favorable, he might park there. So we wouldn't let him. And that was not the case, he had a job. And when I hear people saying they're having issues, and legitimate issues, and the kids have to worry about juniors, I, I, and we have a response, I totally appreciate that we, we do not lose any of them. Uh, especially today, today's day, and even more so when my son was going to school. Can't afford, uh, you know, families can't afford, and I give her, just in the case, her, a lot of credit, making her daughter responsible, in her case, and there are other cases too. And I absolutely, I mean, if we have to, uh, change that policy, or descend it for a while, I think we should do what's right.
The only question, and it's if there was an unintended consequence, I think, of having juniors park, is, does that supplant a senior? So granted, right now, the parking lot is empty, Dawn, what does the parking lot look like in April? It's pretty full, right?
Yeah, well, if, if the history, and I mentioned this, the history behind that, eight years ago, because when there were complaints from the neighbors, that may have been that the juniors were parking out on the street. We had plenty of spots back to ourselves. Obviously, that you get into late April, May.
Yeah, but that's easy with an application process and having a deadline.
I don't, I don't agree with you, because my question is going to be, and, and I, you know what, I have a, my kids go to Wharton Melville High School. My son will turn seventeen in November, he will have a senior license, he will not be able to park for a full year. He works, my son, my daughter works, you have the same issue. It, it is what it is. The question is, really becomes, do seniors displace juniors then? So now, if juniors be able to park, because like my sons, won't be, won't be a junior next year, Wharton Melville.
The rule was seniors get first crack.
Oh, she's saying when seniors turn eighteen, like in April, May, and they have five weeks, I guess, and they're supposed to go to college.
When they turn eighteen and they get their, they get their senior license.
Well, they know that, have a deadline, have a deadline in September, you know that you're gonna, uh, turn eighteen in April, you still apply by September.
That doesn't matter, you can get a car, yeah. Well, they get a car, that's, that's not, you may have to have a first senior, now, and they get kicked out.
But you know.
And you reserve your spot. No, you reserve your spot in September.
I think if you reserve a spot, we might never fill them.
Okay, but then, but it was reserved, at least it was fair then.
But if the documentation says that they can get it, that's what I'm concerned about. If, if the juniors parents.
Yeah, that needs to be fixed, you're absolutely right.
Right, it needs to be fixed, because it sounds like, from the documentation, that, you know, the procedure, not policy, is that juniors, blah, 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 whatever we said.
Yes.
Yeah.
But it doesn't sound like it's being followed, the, you know what I mean? So there's an inconsistency.
I agree, my, my, my question is, you know what, do, do, what, what happens then, when we have enough seniors to take up every spot? Do the juniors then get kicked out?
They lose his spot, last first one is, last one out, or last one hits, first one out. That's something they have to know, if that, if that's what they really want.
And like that.
Yeah, but that's on the building level, I think, I saw it on.
So they get a job, and now they can't do the job, I mean, there's any kind of consequences.
That's a problem, but they have to know that upfront.
Right, it has to be, it has to be clear and concise, and it's not right now.
No, that has to be fixed, for sure, there's no question.
So, and we've been doing it for eight years.
But last year, last year, we had too many kids parking, and that's, and that was a, a dangerous decision.
And when you have a half-empty lot, and you're, and a kid who has a job is told that she can't, listen, and it's not gonna affect my kid. She doesn't get hers till, till February she takes her license, she's not driving to school in four more months, she's got four months.
But that person that, I don't understand why they lost a job, why don't they park on the street outside?
I'm talking about other kids. There's no parking signs all over there, out there.
I just saw, I saw someone do it this morning.
They, they, it's a, it's a walk.
They have to walk far.
It's a walk.
Yeah.
Very tough to police who has a job and who doesn't have a job, you know.
They, they show documentation, they show documentation on the permit.
But then again.
A father could own a business and say, okay, yeah, give this, that you're working for me, a friend could own a business, and then the next thing you know, no one's working, and.
Oh, that, you're right, but. But now we have kids, we have kids that are using fake, we have kids that are using fake permits, that are in their cars right now.
I'd have to hear that.
No, it's there, I'm, I'm sure you're aware of it.
Last week, eighteen kids were, who shouldn't have been in the back, they were throwing out the back.
Right, because they're.
Well, it's, it's a, uh.
He knows, he knows it is there.
It's a building level, it's a building level decision, and that's.
And honestly, he's following policy right now, because policy says seniors only.
Well, the letter that, that we got is not, that's not what it says, and for eight years, we have not done it that way.
Is there any other spots we actually have for student parking?
How many?
I don't know.
Where it come, what happened last year, where it comes into place, when you get into May, in your junior, and the back is full, there are still thirty, forty spots in the front, so the kids were being directed in the front. Trying to make a clear delineation between staff in front and kids in the back. The kids, seventeen-year-olds, aren't the best of, right, so when that, that happened, so it's clearly just the back being full, not moving to the front. Um, Kenny, you know, Kenny made a decision that he didn't want what was happening at the end of the year. There were a couple of fended enders with suspended cars in front.
I understand that, they shouldn't be in the front, I get that, especially with buses coming through. But right now, even now, if you look out that window in the middle of the day, it's empty, there's no cars there.
Well, what, what you do see during the years, the superintendent's saying, is you'll see even the seniors, there are some seniors who are, who are still, have their license yet, are still working on it. There's about three hundred and something permits out right now. It'll go up, it would go up for a normal year, up to almost five hundred, between three seniors and two and change. Low to two hundred is on charge.
It's the same, it's the same thing with drivers, though, you sign up, you get a spot, and if you don't sign up on that day, you don't get that spot. You have to wait for the next class, I mean, it, it, there's, there's a way around it, if you put it in writing and you make it a policy and you make it clear and concise, so that it doesn't hurt everybody, because right now, it's hurting kids.
The other fact, I just throw that in there, which, you know, you get a lot of complaints in there about traffic coming in from the front. So, you eliminate.
You're still gonna have the mothers driving their kids there, too.
You have some, you have some, you have some say, you know, it's a fairly reasonable lawsuit.
Well, you know what? And waiting in line and blocking the car.
You take almost two hundred cars out of the mix, juniors usually have first period.
The numbers are gonna hit the high school next year, they're gonna be lower.
Good.